... to order at nine o'clock. And if I could ask everyone to stand for the singing of our national anthem. All right. So, starting off on item 1.0, addition to the agenda. Is there any additions to the agenda? Seeing none, can I get a motion to adopt the agenda? Counselor Gamana, all in favor? That is carried. Item 3.0, corrections or amendments to January 17, 2018, regular meeting of council minutes. Is there any corrections or amendments to those? Seeing none, can I get a motion to adopt the January 17, 2018, regular meeting of council minutes? Counselor Peebles, all in favor? That is carried. So, we move on to item 5.0, which is a delegation that I requested of our Honorable Mark Smith, MLA, for the Drayton Valley Devon area. So, if you want to take the podium and thank you for coming and, yeah, I just thought it would be a good opportunity that we've settled in a little bit as council. It's been a busy couple of months, just to see if there's anything pertinent coming out of your office, out of the government of Alberta, how you feel about the wine ban that was implemented yesterday.
One of the things that I really believe is that various responsibilities of governments that we need to be keeping at that level, making sure, so I want to thank you for inviting me in today. Number one, I guess, congratulations.
Thank you.
On your victories and your willingness to serve on behalf of our constituents. So, I'm really happy to see you guys starting to settle in and I know that we cross paths on a regular basis and various events, so congratulations. We were just talking with the councilors myself, we happened to cross paths at the Northwest Saskatchewan, well, across Saskatchewan, the watershed system. And one of the takeaways that I took, and I'm not sure what you took on there because you were there for a little while longer than I was, but all of the work that the municipalities are doing on trying to manage the watershed, the Saskatchewan River, you know, very important. And one of the takeaways that I took was that because of the efforts of the municipalities, because of the Northwestern watershed association, they are, they have been able to take the water quality of the North Saskatchewan over the last 25 years and bring it to the same water quality that was there in the 1920s. There was a significant less population in the industry. And we know that one of the issues that's probably going to be coming up in our headlines or in our life as MLAs, probably sometimes the term is going to be a relatively controversial suggestion that they've been a big provincial part in the province or something. And there's been some real debate going on in this province as to how open the eastern slopes should be because there's a need and desire and a reasonable desire to make sure that the headwaters of our river systems are being protected and the biodiversity of the eastern sources is being protected. While at the same time, how do we ensure that Albertans have access to those eastern sources and free access to those eastern sources? So, that's one of the issues that's going to be kind of the, the right here probably is, you mentioned the N of the C lines and the first line and those issues that are in the news and, yeah, very serious. And speak with my heart of how we operate this collaboration processes. So, no, I think our goal is to, as a province, create a level of support to that conservative party as we record to ensure that we have time, something as important as that, like we do have access to this, to type life. And we understand that the Governor of BC has its constituents and it needs to represent, it needs to do so with the economy and it's not going to be a problem. I guess maybe at the end of the part of it, I really like my reading today, not so much from what I can come to, but to start that process at the helm. I think it's going to be really important to move forward the past two, three years. The economy still struggling with Big Valley, still trying to figure out how we can diversify our economy, forward our economy. You struggle by trying to provide the services that are necessary and I come looking to the picture with funding, province. I think it's very important that we continue having, so feel free to keep that level of, I have felt and believed that there is an opportunity with this council and that we can move forward in such a fashion that maybe even on a formal side of all, we have those conversations going on, whether you want to make the formal process for meeting on a regular basis once a quarter or whatever here, or whether you want to have a more formal, just to make sure that you keep those issues that are going to be important for both of us to follow and to keep talking about. I've been very happy when you have brought issues to my attention and when you have taken me aside or come to my office or whatever and you've had a chance to sit down, very much appreciate it and commend you for that and say that to all of the councillors in the area, that you know my office is open anytime. If you have a contact information, please ask me for it and be happy to give it myself. You really need to get in touch with me. So, any comments, concerns, if you want to raise to me right now, issues that you guys are starting to identify? I know that the Mayor and I were talking together last week and I'm trying to, one of the things that I had suggested to him was that it's a lot easier for me to work with you if we've identified one or two or three issues that are really important to council and how we can move all of the issues together. So, I'm all ears.
Yeah. For opening up to questions again, yeah, thank you for coming out and we have met on several times and one thing I appreciate is your passion for the economic development in our region and that's something that this whole council is passionate about. So, I think we'll be working very closely on that if it's letter writing and, but what's the timeline actually for the UCP for, so obviously you'll have to run for your spots again, I guess, within the UCP. What's the timeline for that?
For the nomination process?
Yep. I'm not asking so interested.
Okay. What we're looking at here is this, and this is my understanding as of late, and it's over the last five or six months, it's changed about three times. So, we were gonna, are gonna have the conservative, the AG and the mayor, and it will be after May into June that they'll start to run up the nomination process. Of course, it's gonna be a little different than it has been in the past. The past nominations have always just been a party issue. So, the party makes the policies for deciding how the nominations are run. But in the last legislature, the past legislation that now makes the promises. So, for instance, if you're gonna run for any political party as a nominated candidate, we now have to register a few elections on there. There are limits on how much an individual in this province can spend and on any political candidate. So, there is a limit of $4,000 a year, whether you're part of the nomination race, whether you're part of the leadership race, whether you're part of a general election or by-election or just going to be elected on the ballot. So, there are some significant changes to ways of, it's time to start as public.
Interesting. Yeah. Not that I don't doubt you will come out victorious, I was just curious.
Well, you know, that's, that's up to the people and that's up to the, to the efforts of the individuals that choose to run. My position on that is has been always will be the same, that you want to have the best candidate. And, you know, I will encourage people to vote their house, honestly. Because we all know as elected officials, nobody guarantees you anything, right? Whether you're gonna win or whether you're gonna lose, whether you're, whatever, nobody guarantees you anything and you know that going in.
Yep, sure. Is there any, Mr. Counsel Ballas?
A couple of things that I have concerns about. One is the traffic flow that's going to be increased on Highway 22, north especially. And I'm wondering if there's been any discussion with the Minister in regards to whether Highway 22 will be looked at, especially even if it's just passing lanes or resurfacing or something.
We just received a month ago a request to go forward infrastructure proposals to the minister. So, I had my office contact all of the municipalities, ask them for their top priorities. We compiled that, this was sent down to the ministry. From that point on, the minister's office will have to take those priorities and look at their budgets and see where they want to place those priorities and let these managers know. We have not yet heard, we need to just have to hear what those priorities would go to the minister's office. So, as far as Highway 22, I'm aware of the correspondence between the minister and myself.
Where, from the county, the town and yourself, the advantage?
It hurts, but I think we're probably the horses out of the barn already. Now, I think we'll probably look at the future next year, but I think we can always, always have. The minister always needs to be informed and I think more than half of the time.
One other thing, ECDC, the Early Child Development Centre, is there a way to possibly look at getting some enhanced funding from the government?
And that's, that's true, let's try. I'm not sure of the programs we can assist them, but that's just a matter of making calls.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I know you have involvement with the Alberta Hemp Alliance and I thought maybe this would be a good opportunity to just kind of briefly talk about that because, I mean, everyone around this table knows about it, but not necessarily the general public. And so, what can you share with us on the Alberta Hemp Alliance, where it's been, where it's going?
I'll give you the research digest version of it. I'll say that one of the first people who came by was Dan from BioConfist, started to advocate for, for his business and for the hemp industry and that's what really got me, got me going on. And it became through the CETC and through my, obvious that we were going to be approaching the government for help and that, in my conversations with Mr. Phillips, that if we cooperated as a region, the Alberta, I think the government would be all, trying to promote the industrial supply chain. So, that's when my conversations with the former Mayor of Devon and Big Valley and others, I floated the idea of a regional alliance that would allow an association, would allow us to cooperate. Because there are going to be some key parts to that industrial supply chain, to grow and we're going to see our economy diversify in that area. One is that we're gonna have to try to encourage farmers to begin growing here as a new crop and farmers need to understand that crop is like, how it's grown, whether they can be successful with it, whether there's a supply and demand for it, and what kind of price points they're, they're gonna be able to get on it. Along with that, there is a need for a decortication facility, process the industrial hemp so that the demand on this business would be able to, can access, have an access to raw hemp supply and produce. We know that in the past year, that we've started to see some movement in these directions. Dad, last year, and in the last two, two and a half years, three years that he's been in the office, we've seen Dad go from not being commercialized to now being commercialized. And he used every piece of industrial long fiber, him, that he could find in the province of Alberta, that he could find in the province of Manitoba, and he had to be any advocate of the best he could meet for here. And so, there's an opportunity here for us as municipalities to work together through something like the association, the Alberta Association or what do we call it?
Alliance.
Alliance. And try and promote regional working together to develop that industrial supply chain. We're very unique in this area in that you have HempCo, it's been bought up by Aurora, that will take the seed from the industrial hemp. We have the only commercialized facility in North America that will take the long fiber. And it looks like over the last six months or so, we're starting to find a solution for finding the money and the capital to create a decortication facility. Over the last year, we've had one facility, a one business of Toronto, that says they have $75 million in portfolio, a very large decortication facility somewhere in Alberta. Whether or not that would be in this area, there is a need to be a fit towards that. And so, for myself, I've been really pleased to see a group of British people starting to talk. Somewhere in there, it looks like maybe could be getting some form of open decortication facility. Whether it's Great Valley or whether it's in the vicinity, I'm not sure. This could be really exciting. This could be a $300 million industry in this area in the next couple of years, $1 billion in this particular part, it's probably the next five or six years. So, but I think that towns like Great Valley have to make sure that they're, because places like Miskiul and Leech, they are, they are running hard on trying to ensure the facilities and business that they have. So, you need to, you need to work there.
Yep. No? Yeah, so, yeah, on that note, I think I, just the, the other day, I think the framework for that feasibility study for the Decorticator in Drayton Valley or Brazu has been put together. I think they're putting it out to quote here sooner rather than later. So, once we have that, we can...
I agree with you, I mean, with this council and with your cooperation on this, there's lots of little pieces of the puzzle that have to kind of get around this, it's really , but, you know, one of my jobs and my pleasures is to be able to interface with all the councils across the constituents. The other day, I had a gathering, Counselor Peebles was at, and I let you let, Counselor Butts, and, yeah, I think Counselor Matt was there. In that, at that event, I got talking to Blake Adams, who is a councillor for Devon, and one of the pieces of that puzzle for that's hemp supply chain. And I was going to, and as we get farmers growing, how do they harvest? Because there's a variance, industrial hemp is the strongest natural fiber in the world and it's not easy to harvest with a traditional farmer's sheep. So, how are we gonna make sure that farmers get enough capacity to grow and to harvest? Now, there are machines in Europe that are being, that are doing that. You don't have to do that in Europe. Counselor Adams has created, has started to recover, that is using the same tractors that were used in Europe, just has to get different machinery parts to be able to harvest the hemp. So, there may be a potential there of further conversation with the Alberta hemp company to perhaps pursue some funding so that his company could be in some, as a harvest company, it's an idea, it's a suggestion, it's a good idea, I don't know. If we're trying to put these pieces of the puzzle together, we have to work all the way.
All right. Well, thank you for that. Yes, the hemp industry, a lot of exciting things going on and, again, we appreciate all of the support we've been, you've been giving there area for job creation.
You know, I guess, I guess I wouldn't just put one other thing out there for you because I don't know if you've, I hear you've grabbed on this one. There is a company out there that is, has, my understanding, I talked with, raised $35 million dollars to do a pilot project. It should probably be starting sometime this summer, other than being the one for chill for energy and production electricity and chill. And should that be successful, and there's no reason why, I believe, they won't, they have identified 25,000 orphaned wells or abandoned wells, non-productive production wells, that they believe have enough heat for them to use rural electricity. And this could put a lot of drillers and operators and such back to work and they're making a start in this area. So, it may be something that we might have conversations, have connections with that company, if you'd like, as a prepared, if you're able to.
Excellent. I'm glad to hear that. So, any other questions or comments? Well, again, thank you very much for your time and...
Where I am, I have to talk with any of you and I'm always in.
All right. Thank you very much. Excuse me. So, we'll move on to our decision items. Item 6.0, 6.1, the Mayor's Advisory Council Appointment. So, if everyone remembers, that last meeting, we did appoint a number of people to the Mayor's Advisory Committee, but there was still some open seats and we did have one submission come just after that council meeting. So, I've moved it just to this agenda. It is Ms. Astrid Mitchell that has made the appointment. And so, if there's anyone willing to make a motion on this, to open it up for discussion, Counselor Peebles?
I move to counsel appoint Ms. Astrid Mitchell as a community member-at-large to the Mayor's Advisory Council for a two-year term commencing February 7, 2018 and ending October 31, 2019.
All right. Thank you very much. Is there any discussions on this? Comments? So, Ms. Mitchell did indicate to me that she was going to put an application in and, as I mentioned, as per the bylaw, I believe there's upwards of, is it 11 or 13? 13, that can be on. And so, I believe this will bring it up to 10 members. So, if there's no comments or discussions, the motion is there, so all in favor? That is carried. Decision item 6.2, the Appointment to Exploratory Recreation and Culture Committee. So, coming out of just a joint strategy meeting that we had with the Brazu County, they expressed an interest in looking at some ways that we can, you know, look at different options for a Recreation and Culture Committee. And one of that is, is by forming, I'm not going to call it a short-term or a long-term committee, but just two members from the Brazu Council, two members from the Town Council and possibly a member or two from the community and with the purpose of looking at all of our options, seeing what the best go-forward approach is with the Recreation and Culture. And so, this stems from the council passing the resolution for the updated Recreation and Culture Cost Sharing, which the county council did not pass. And so, they expressed an interest in creating this board to look at the options and look at what we can do to either find efficiencies or maybe if there's a better way of, of running these boards or maybe the way we're doing it is the best. But they've expressed an interest in having some people look at the options. So, for item 6.2, is there anyone interested in making a motion on this particular item? Counselor Gamana?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll make the motion to appoint Counselor Ballas and Counselor Butts for the Exploratory Recreation and Culture Committee. Thank you.
Okay. So, is Counselor Butts and Counselor Dodds correct? Oh, sorry, Ballas, Ballas and, sorry. So, is there any comments or feedback, questions on this? Anyone want to weigh in on it? Counselor Peebles?
I think this is a good step forward. I know from the town side and some of our discussions, we'd love to see it be a thing where we are working well together, that, that both sides are coming to the table with a good cohesive plan. And Bill has been the advocate for this pretty much since the get-go, so I'm glad to see he's on there and with his wisdom and charm and Eric's ability to crunch the numbers and, and smile with a knowledge base that we may not understand behind it, the numbers, I think it'll be good. I think, I think it's Anthony and Mark that are on the committee as well, so I think those guys will go through a lot of stuff and just kind of come up with some really good options. So, I'm looking forward to seeing what comes out of that.
All right. Counselor Butts?
I would just like to say that I'm looking forward to, if council approves, working with Bill, Anthony and Mark and others to review our recreation and see how we can do a better job.
Yeah. Yeah, I think at the end of the day, Alvin Cole has tried to save both communities money if possible and if, if not, then I guess we'll find out that we're doing everything to the best of our ability, which, which may not be a stretch, so. All right. If there's no other comments, we have the motion. All in favor? All right. So, that is Counselor Butts and Counselor Ballas appointed to the Exploratory Recreation and Culture Committee. Decision item 6.3 is the community grants, our first quarter allotment. I could ask Ms. Annette Driesen to speak to that briefly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good morning, council. As with previous programs that the town Drayton Valley has put in place, we have, of course, the applications submitted for the first quarter of the community events. And there are a number of grants that the town does provide. One is the Community Events Grant, the other is the Roger Coles Memorial Spark Grant, and the third is the Youth Arts Culture and Heritage Grant. Those applications were due January 2 of this year and we received applications just for the Community Events Grant. The other, the other grants, of course, we received no applications. The town purchased the Community Events Grant on a quarterly basis, recognizing that over an allocation of $20,000 for the entire year, we're making $5,000 available for distribution in this quarter. There were four eligible applications that were submitted. Three are being presented to council...
which may not be a stretch. So, all right, if there's no other comments, we have the motion. All in favor? All right. So that is Councilor Butts and Councilor Ballas appointed to the Exploratory Recreation and Culture Committee. Decision item six point three is the community grants, our first quarter allotment. I could ask Ms. Annette Creason to speak to that briefly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good morning, council. As with previous programs that the town of Drayton Valley has put in place, we have, of course, the applications submitted for the first quarter of the community events. And there are a number of grants that the town does provide. One is the Community Events Grant. The other is the Roger Coles Memorial Spark Grant. And the third is the Youth Arts Culture and Heritage Grant. Those applications were due January second of this year. And we received applications just for the Community Events Grant. The other grants, of course, we received no applications. The town purchased the Community Events Grant on a quarterly basis, recognizing that over an allocation of twenty thousand dollars for the entire year, we're making five thousand dollars available for distribution in this quarter. There were four eligible applications that were submitted. Three are being presented to council. The fourth was eligible for funding, but also had received funding through Family and Community Support Services. And because it received all of their funding, that is why they're not being listed here as a separate entity. There's the applications here from Aim For Success for their I Am Empowered Women's Conference happening April fourteenth. The second application from the Drayton Valley Skating Club, looking for applications, looking for funding assistance for their annual figure skating competition, which just occurred this past weekend, and their carnival, annual carnival coming up February twenty-fourth. And the third is from the Toronto Maple Leafs Alumni Hockey Game Committee, with that event happening February seventeenth. So it's here for consideration by council.
Thank you very much on that. So I guess we'll go in order in which they are presented, first one being the Aim For Success. Is there anyone that would like to make a motion on Aim For Success and the Women's Conference? Going once? Councilor Dodds?
I would like to make a motion that council award Aim For Success two thousand dollars to help cover.
Costs associated with the I Am Empowered Women's Conference on April fourteenth, two thousand eighteen.
All right. Thank you very much. So that motion is for two thousand dollars to Aim For Success. Is there any questions, comments, discussion on this? Councilor Butts?
I think it's a great program and it's an interesting one. And it's relatively unique for our community. My wife and daughter are going, so they'll be their first time to check it out. But I think it will be well worth our money to spend on.
Yeah, I think it's a great event that comes to our town every year. And, you know, I know a lot of people that put a lot of work into making it happen. And I think anything that we can do to make that burden a little bit easier on them and make the conference a success is a step in the right direction for our town. So any other comments, questions? All right. So we have the motion for Aim For Success and the Women's Leadership Conference at two thousand dollars. All in favor? That is carried. So the second application is the Drayton Valley Skating Club. Is there anyone willing to make a motion on this? Councilor Ballas?
I'd make a motion that council award the Drayton Valley Skating Club fifteen hundred dollars to help cover costs associated with hosting the annual figure skating competition being held on February second to fourth, twenty eighteen, and annual carnival being held on February twenty-fourth, twenty eighteen.
Sorry, what was the dollar amount on that one?
Fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred. Okay. So any comments or discussion? Councilor Butts?
Well, this one's near and dear to me because my children all skate. The competition, we haven't had one in about six years because it's on a rotating basis and it takes a huge amount of volunteer hours and support to put on. But we were able to put one on this year, which will raise funds for the club and also brought hundreds of people to the town to use our services and our hotels and our restaurants and everything. So I think it's been a nice little tourist boost to our community, even though the weather had an impact on that. Otherwise, I'd only point out that between the competition and the carnival, the Figure Skating Club does pay about ten thousand dollars to the Omniplex for services. So that this request covers a part of that.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? So the motion for fifteen hundred dollars for the Drayton Valley Skating Club, all in favor? That is carried. And the last application on the list is for the Toronto Maple Leafs Alumni Hockey Game Committee, who did receive a portion of the funding in the fourth quarter allocation, but they were asking for a significant amount and it was a very small amount which they received. So they were able to apply again and they have. So would anyone like to make a motion on this? Councilor Gamana?
I would like to make a motion that council award Toronto Maple Leafs Alumni Hockey Game Committee fifteen hundred dollars to help cover the costs associated with hosting the Toronto Maple Leafs Alumni Hockey Game February seventeenth, twenty eighteen. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything, Councilor Butts, you'd like to add on this one?
I've been impressed by how much they have fundraised from the community for this first-time event.
Thank you for that. Anyone else?
I'd like to add that they have a list of charities that is going to be benefiting from this event and I think that's great to this community. Thank you.
Excellent. All right. So the motion for fifteen hundred dollars for the Toronto Maple Leafs Alumni Hockey Game is on the table. So all in favor? That is carried. So usually, the decision items will stop for a break, but I'm not thinking that thirty-five minutes was enough to warrant having a break. So we'll move on to the department reports. We'll start with seven point one, Engineering and Development, Sonia Rillesworth, who has a haircut, which will state for the record, looks good.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and council. So right now, our Public Works crew are busy clearing streets and aiming to get to residential areas once all the priorities have been cleared. We have Jen Martin from our Planning and Development, who will give you the year-end report from that branch.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, council. I guess this would be my first time in front of you since you guys all got elected in. So just to give you a brief explanation, twice a year, we present the Planning and Development Report. Based on the totals for permits, the values and housing starts, we do the full-year report, usually the beginning of the year for the previous year. And then we'll do a half-year report, again, usually in the summertime, from January to June. In February, you do have the report printed off. On slide number one, which is the development permit totals for two thousand eight to two thousand seventeen, we do have that they have increased by nineteen in two thousand seventeen, but they're still on the low side. Majority of the permits that were issued were the signage and improvements to residential lots. Two thousand sixteen, it was showing at seventy-one. Two thousand seventeen went up to ninety. On slide number two there, the development permit values from two thousand eight to two thousand seventeen, two thousand seventeen saw the lowest revenue, went back to two thousand one, which valued at six million seventy-three thousand seven hundred and nine, which ended up being a two million two hundred and fifty-two thousand five hundred and nineteen difference. Two thousand seventeen is showing at three million eight hundred and twenty-one thousand one hundred and ninety. Although the number of permits may have increased from last year, the revenue had decreased by two million two hundred and seventy-four thousand seven hundred and fifty-four. This could be due to the fact that the economy was beginning to pick up, but companies were still a little reluctant to spend vast amounts of dollars until they see a steady price in oil. That's kind of the feedback we had been getting from some commercial companies. The last slide, which is regarding the new housing starts. Again, we go back to two thousand eight. And the reason we go back to two thousand eight is just because it was the last time the economy was in a low state. We received three applications for residential developments, which was an increase from last year, which we only had two. Both commercial and residential developments were, again, low with respect to the economy the past couple of years. So we can really hope that things pick up and remain steady for future years. I've heard good rumors that the oil is picking up. So hopefully, that brings more dollars to the community and builders will continue. On another note, there are approximately two thousand six hundred and forty-five single-family homes within the town. Every time there is a new build, we do add on to this number. So we do have the totals there. In November, November first, two thousand seventeen, the province did note that they require now all builders in the province of Alberta require not only a municipal license, but a provincial license. This is just kind of to, I guess, weed out those builders who don't exactly follow code, especially in those municipalities that are not accredited. Everything for it there goes through Municipal Affairs, but this way, the province is keeping a better eye on them. And in order to, builders have to apply and actually submit a whole bunch of paperwork if they've had any claims or anything against them in the past. So this helps the province and also municipalities with their local builders. And that's pretty much it. If the council has any questions.
Thank you. Is there any questions? Ms. Councilor Butts?
Just looking at the development permit values, what kind of activities would be industrial compared to commercial?
Industrial is more of in our industrial districts. So we have the zoning separated. So we have our commercial, which is the more heavier traffic, like with the Walmart, the Canadian Tire, that type of businesses, the oil field. In industrial districts, you have your more heavier-type occupations that go there. In industrial, we only really had seen signage this year. We didn't really see much else. So like warehouses would be considered industrial, anything up in Westview, industrial parks. So those get classified into that district.
Any other questions?
Just a question for Sonia. Obviously, with the snow that we got this weekend, I noticed we, it didn't seem like the cooling started in any major way until, you know, later Sunday, earlier Monday. Do you think there would have been a benefit to having our staff out on Saturday when it wasn't quite as busy on the streets?
We had planned to have the snow ban in place for Fiftieth and Fiftieth so that everybody, the roads would be clear prior to any traffic for schools and work on Monday morning.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments, questions? All right. So we will move on to seven point two, Community Services and FCSS. Ms. Creason?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. A few things to report on. Of course, looking with anticipation to responses from Brazos County with respect to the request for capital projects for some of the things that we've put forward. So I'll be working with my counterpart with Brazos County on that basis. Parkland County has already given approvals for the majority of the projects that we've identified for the Omniplex and the Park Valley Pool. Just to comment briefly about the Early Childhood Development Centre, we are putting in an expression of interest to the provincial government's proposal regarding the twenty-five-dollar-a-day proposal. Again, it is something where they will take a look at expressions of interest to see if there's the applicability to the program, how we fit in in terms not just our objectives, but also meeting some of the qualifications. And I can tell you emphatically that we have exceeded on many of those eligibility standards with respect to their application. But of course, it is something that still needs to meet their parameters. So we hope to hear within a month, month and a half if we will be considered. Also looking, we are doing some work within Park Valley Pool to complete some deficiencies with respect to the air balancing within that facility. So we've been working steadily on trying to make sure that we can get those controls properly established so that we've got the proper balance between positive, negative air, as well as the humidity within the Park Valley Pool. It's always, always a difficult thing, but that's why we're having to call in the experts on this one. Also looking seriously, and we have been since last summer, looking at the need to address the high need and, shall I say, the future need for dressing rooms within the Omniplex. Certainly, the information we've received from user groups is indicating that we're close to a need of actually having to double what we currently have within our facility. Now, we know that we cannot do that. So it's a matter of trying to say, see what we can do to accommodate minor hockey with their requests for additional dressing rooms. And the Aquatic Committee, in terms of looking at a new facility, we're having our first meeting February twenty-second. This will be the first meeting since the election. So of course, we have a couple of new council members sitting on that committee and so bringing them up to speed on what's going on. That's my report right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. We will move to seven point three, Emergency Services. Tom Thompson?
Mr. Mayor, council. Not a lot to report this time. Just normal operating activities that we've been doing. We did receive the rescue pumper truck, which showed up last week. So we're in the process of putting the equipment on that new truck and getting it ready to be operational. And that's all I have for this report.
Thank you. Any questions? We will move to eight point oh, Council Reports, starting at eight point one. Councilor Dodds?
Good morning, everybody. So my report is January seventeenth. I attended the Evergreen Elementary Replacement School Design Meeting. On January nineteenth to the twenty-first, the CAO discussions in Stony Plain. And we met with the Stony Plain Council, which was really nice. On January twenty-second was the IDP Advisory Committee. We discussed the overview of the project, roles, engagement, and the communication plan. On January twenty-fourth was the EPAC Committee Meeting. January twenty-fifth, I attended an emergency management course with all of council at Brazos County, with the County Council, as well as the Village of Breton Council. After the course, we had our joint council meeting. On January twenty-ninth, council had lunch with the Minister of Municipal Affairs, Shay Anderson, which was nice to connect with him. And on February first, I attended the Municipal Progress and Watershed Management in North Saskatchewan River in Sherwood Park. And that was it for me.
All right. Thank you. Eight point two, Councilor Gamana?
Thank you, Your Worship. On January nineteenth, we had the CAO retreat and had a great discussion about the direction that we would like the town and the community to go. On January twenty-fourth, I had the opportunity to attend Economic Development Committee Meeting at Clean Energy Technology Centre and had an in-depth discussion regarding the direction of CTC itself and hemp cluster project and among many other things. On the evening, had the privilege of attending MLA meet and greet at Warburg Senior Centre with few other council colleagues and met with elected officials of the Devon constituency. On January twenty-fifth, I attended the elected officials' training and then the joint council meeting at the Brazos County Office. On February second, had the Budget and Asset Management Committee meeting and started discussions about upcoming budget. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Eight point three, Councilor Butts?
Thank you, Your Worship. It's been relatively busy the last few weeks. January nineteenth to twenty-first was the CAO discussion, as Councilors Gamana and Dodds mentioned. Meeting the Stony Plain Council was interesting to hear their perspective on being new councillors, many of them, and a returning mayor. January twenty-fourth was the MLA meet and greet out in Warburg, which was a good experience connecting with some of our municipal colleagues that we wouldn't otherwise see. Had good discussions with all of them and it's nice to hear that they are forward-thinking as well in various aspects of their projects and their governance. And the big one was February first, we had our first real Budget and Asset Management Committee Meeting, where we discussed a variety of things in great detail. We discussed the Ring Road Capital Project in terms of rerouting the Eighteenth Avenue Intersection. It's been a needed project for at least fifteen years. And it's something that the council approved for development planning in the interim budget. We took a look at our long-term capital requirements and put them in the context of all of our various master plans. So we have master plans and strategic plans for our information services, sidewalks, transportation, water, wastewater, stormwater, cemetery, wastewater infiltration, and district water distribution and waste management. And they're all hundreds of pages long and very interesting. And they drive our future capital requirements, which are significant. So having gotten a handle of everything that we need to spend money on for the next ten to twenty years, we now need to work on how to pay for it. And we also reviewed some of the operating aspects that will affect the final budget. Did a little bit of preliminary review of the Omniplex costing, which will be something, of course, that this new REC Board Committee will be looking at in greater detail. We also looked a little bit more carefully at the ECDC and Family Day Home Information. to understand that and discuss how we will make our budget process simpler, better, more resilient and more transparent going forward.
Thank you. 8.4, Councilor Ballas?
Thank you. On January 18th, I attended the first FCSS meeting as an alternate. A grant application from the Community Learning Association was presented in the amount of $6,219.74. This was a program that was previously offered in the Moon Lake Hall, but due to some conflicts, it's now being offered at the Whitby Hall. The approximate numbers to attend that was given to us is approximately 12 adults and 20 children. However, this could not be confirmed, nor could the budget that was presented be actually confirmed. We therefore approved one-third of the grant application. It's just over $2,000, which will allow them to run the program to March and then reapply for the balance after providing some additional financial information and attendance numbers. On June 18th, in the evening, met with the Legacy Project. The cost of getting our history scan seems to be continually escalating. A review of contracts and process in that regard is being examined. On January 24th, we had an Economic Development Meeting, discussed various items like CETC, hemp, Norquest, different options for the CETC. January 25th morning, attended along with the County Council and Breton Council, a course on emergency management. A lot of beneficial information there, and a thank you to the Brazel County for inviting us. In the afternoon, we had a joint meeting with the Brazel County Council and Breton Council, very encouraged by our progress with these joint meetings and look forward to continued dialogue. On January 29th, had an informal luncheon with the Minister of Municipal Affairs, Shay Anderson, very cordial luncheon. On January 31st, we had a governance and priority meeting, and it was a fairly active month. Thank you.
Thank you. 8.5, Councilor Peebles?
Thank you, Your Worship. I had quite similar things to some of these guys, so I'll kind of blitz through those. January 19th, 21st, we had our CAO discussions, where you did a lot of strategic planning. It was really good. January 22nd, I had the IDP Advisory Committee. I sit with Councilor Dodds, as well as Anthony and Mark from the county on there, and it's great to see, I think we're going to be able to work together well on this. And then we had a review of it later on. January 24th, we had the MLA meet and greet in Warburg. It was really good. Quite a few of these guys are very interested in the hemp stuff and some of this geothermal as well, so that seemed to be a lot of the discussion we had. January 25th, we had our elected officials' emergency management, and it was really great to have, I think we had all members from Brazel County, Breton Council and Town Council together for it, so it was really good. And even the joint council meeting afterwards with all three was something great. And I think next meeting, I think all three are getting together again, so I'm glad to see Breton coming to the table as well. January 29th, we had our meeting with Shay Anderson and it was a really good discussion. And it's kind of fun, I spent a lot of time just selling his staffers on Drayton Valley as a community, made sure that they understood why we love this community so much. So, I was preaching, preaching it. And then, what else did I get? I had my Eagle Point, Blue Rapids meeting that night. They're still waiting on some funding from the government and they're getting a little nervous because they're dipping into the reserves pretty much monthly now. So, they got to see if some of the money that they are expecting is coming, and they are very happy about our donation towards the centre there at this ski hill, so they're very excited about that. And it was a four-hour meeting. And then, February 2nd, I had a meeting with the Alberta Hemp Alliance. There was a strategic planning session, and a lot of what we were trying to do is figure out what we wanted to be when we grow up. There's been a lot of people that just kind of sat around and there's a lot of politicians in a room, but not a lot getting done, which tends to happen. So, we just kind of laid out what different communities have to offer that are within the Alberta Hemp Alliance, and pretty much as a case to sell our area, our region, as the place to invest in industrial hemp. So, the case is pretty great. There's a lot of great assets that we have kind of across the board, and even some of the smaller municipalities is really great. So, that's my report for all of people kind.
Thank you. I appreciate the people kind remark. So, 8.6, so I'm mostly not as organized as the rest of you because I don't put dates beside my notes, so I'll just touch on a few things. A lot, most of the meetings have already been discussed, but I did have a cannabis Alberta Talks meeting, kind of, they're starting to get organized there, and they're planning on having five, four sessions in Alberta, or in Drayton Valley, one in Breton, to talk about what the future of legalized cannabis is going to be in our province and how our town is going to handle that. It's more of an education session, but I do encourage, once the dates become released, that everyone go out and have their voice heard. Some of that information will probably find its way back to this table, where we can debate, you know, the bylaw that we will have to generate for cannabis in our town. A few other things, with the emergency meeting, management meeting, I was very happy to note that as mayor, I don't have to do a whole lot, except for just talk to media. I thought that was very nice. We don't have to be in the command centre. We, well, I should probably look to make sure we have people appointed and it's active, look at our plan. We did have the Minister Shay Anderson in town. I met with him actually on three separate occasions, one at the Clean Energy Technology Centre. I was very encouraged to hear that he is still very excited about what we're doing there and willing to help us possibly open up a few doors with the other ministers within the cabinet, the ones that maybe have some ability to assist us in moving forward. We did have lunch, and then there was also a meeting in Thorsby with other elected officials, mostly mayors and some councillors from the surrounding area. A couple of the concerns from the other communities, such as Devon, Thorsby, Breton, Warburg, were the concern over the carbon tax and how most of that money seems to be funneling into the major centres for, you know, big billion-dollar projects like light rail. So, everyone's paying into this, but they don't feel that those dollars are necessarily making their way back into the smaller communities. They did bring up a lot of concerns about roads. We did talk about Highway 22, but it turns out almost every road in Alberta, or at least in the area, needs work. And then, of course, there was just some general concern about money coming to municipalities and how that's going to look moving forward. And Minister Shay Anderson did indicate that that is in his wheelhouse, and one thing that he's looking at doing and what he's working on is trying to take the MSI dollars that municipalities get and put it more structured, so we don't have to guess from year to year what we're going to get. It'll be based on, you know, population, something. He doesn't know exactly how it's going to look, but something that's guaranteed and we will have a good indication of what that number is going to be, so we're not left guessing. And yesterday, I had the privilege of being a guest speaker for about 40 students at McEwan University, and is on entrepreneurship and also politics and how politics can change the entrepreneurial landscape. So, that was a very good chance for me to talk about Drayton Valley, some of my personal experiences, kind of get them interested in the Clean Energy Technology Centre, industrial hemp and just what Drayton Valley has to offer in general. I did have meetings afterwards with the Director of the Caliber Program through McEwan University, and I also had lunch with the Dean of the School of Business and a few other individuals. So, it was a great day overall, kind of showcasing Drayton Valley. You know, McEwan University wasn't necessarily aware of what we're doing out here. They're very encouraged about it and looking to see if there's any ways that they can help us with the Clean Energy Technology Centre and building our community. So, that is my report, and so we will move on to information items. I'll just take a quick drink of water before I go through this. For the information items, 9.1, Waste Management Committee Notes, September 12th, 2017. Sustainability Committee Notes, September 19th, 2017, and December 6th, 2017. Economic Development Committee Notes, from September 28th, 2017, December 6th, 2017, January 3rd, 2018. Star Catholic Board Highlights, January 2018. Drayton Valley Legacy Project, January 18th, 2018. Meeting Notes. Drayton Valley Municipal Library Board Minutes, November 20th, 2017. To the Honourable Cathy Ganley, Minister of Justice and Solicitor General, on the RCMP funding for small urban communities. And Budget and Asset Management Committee Notes, December 8th, 2017. Can I have a motion to accept these as information? Councilor Peebles, all in favor? That is carried, and I adjourn this meeting at 10:01 Mountain Standard Time.